Hi Josh.
How we all doing?
Me too.
And I'm on this time. What's that? Hello Josh. Oh gosh, how we doing? Doing well, how are you doing?
Doing well.
Good. Eric's working on his computer, he was having it.
Well Eric, we are gonna be starting here in a second.
So can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear ya.
Can you hear me through the meeting though?
Yes.
So is this working then? Is my computer working?
We hear you, we hear you.
Can anybody respond to me through the voice?
I can hear you just fine, Eric. Eric, this is John, sorry to check here, me too, this time.
You're on.
Should I hang up, Mr. Parrish?
Uh, let's try it, see how it goes.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner O'Neil, we can unfortunately hear you.
No, no.
I can't hear your voice.
Eric, can we hear you now?
Let's see, perfect.
Eric.
Have we done roll call yet?
No.
No.
Yes, sir.
I can't hear anybody.
Um, in the email that was sent, uh, there should be a dial-in instructions for the meeting, and we can use that with your phone. Or if you exit full screen mode. Stand by, second. Sure, yeah?
Can you send me the link again, Jason?
Yeah, I can send you the link again.
Perfect. Can you see me?
Yes, we can see you.
Yep.
I can't hear anyone.
Working on my computer or all the computers? Both of mine are doing the same thing. Okay.
Okay, so I think we have everybody connected, right? Can everybody hear?
I'm gonna call the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners regular meeting agenda Wednesday, June 17th, 2020 to order. We have roll calls, please.
We have eleven presents, one absent. Commissioner McDonough is not here.
As the record show, the Commissioner McDonough is excused this evening. Commissioner Morgan, would you lead us into prayer, please?
You bet. Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which so greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Johnson.
Amen.
Next we'll go to the approval of the minutes of the June 3rd, 2020 regular meeting. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve the June 3rd, 2020 regular meeting minutes.
Second. We have a motion made in second to approve the June 3rd, 2020 regular meeting minutes. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote?
Uh, I don't have the.
I don't have the screen. Who was that that said that?
I don't have it either, Chief Executive.
We're missing a couple of people yet.
Mr. Chief Executive, I vote yea. Looks like we need Commissioner Mankins.
I vote yea.
Okay, and was that everybody, Jason? So eleven yea, zero nay.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. I do not believe we have any items not addressed on the agenda this evening, and under the chief.
Mr. Chief Executive, we do.
Sorry, I'm on the meeting. Just having internet issues. Okay, thank you, Commissioner McDonough. As the record show, Commissioner McDonough has joined.
Mr. Chief Executive, we do have a communication to add to tonight's agenda.
Okay. Which one is it at?
Twenty twenty dash two five nine. Do you want me to just read it? I'll, uh, I'll go, I'll just start reading it. Um, "In accordance with the provisions of Section 6 of Rule 6 of the Rules of Order of the Council of Commissioners of the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, state of Montana, the council hereby finds that an emergency condition exists which requires that the council rules be suspended to allow communication twenty twenty dash two five nine to be added to the agenda of the regular meeting of the council. The reason for this suspension is as follows. Communication twenty twenty dash two five nine is a communication from County Attorney Eileen Joyce requesting that the council authorize the chief executive to sign a contract with the Department of Public Health and Human Services Addictive and Mental Disorders Division, DPHHS, to utilize grant funding provided by the DPHHS to address acute mental health needs within Butte Silver Bow, Montana. This communication was not submitted by the deadline for the June 17th agenda because the final version was not received until after the deadline for submission. Um, "At this time, Mr. Chief Executive, I make a motion to approve the suspension of the rules to consider placing council communication twenty twenty dash two five nine on the agenda at the June 17th, 2020 meeting."
Second.
We have a motion in made in second to approve the suspension of the rules to place communication twenty twenty dash two five nine on tonight's agenda. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Let's, would, yeah.
I don't have any way to vote on the screen.
Okay, uh, we currently have ten yea, zero nay. Uh, Commissioner Anderson, how do you vote? Commissioner Anderson, can you signify by yea or nay?
Yea.
Okay, and?
Commissioner McDonough?
Yep. Commissioner McDonough? Commissioner McDonough, can you signify how you vote?
He's on mute.
Commissioner McDonough?
He stated he was having internet problems, he might be off the meeting right now.
Chief Executive Palmer, how would you like to proceed?
Jason, do you think he could call in? There he is. Commissioner McDonough, can you hear us? Yeah, my computer shot off in the meantime, so I'm back on here. Okay, we just voted on the suspension of rules. Voting yea? Yes. Okay.
So twelve yea, zero nay.
Twelve yea. So motion carries. Next we'll go on to the chief executive's report, I just wanna talk about the Ridgewater pools for a minute. Uh, when they filled it up at the beginning of the season, a couple, about a week and a half ago, it was not holding water, they were losing water, so they had to check that out. The person, the pool company flew into Butte and worked with Markovich Construction and our own crews, and we determined, they determined that there was a cracked pipe in the deep end of the pool. They have jackhammered that up, cut out a section of the pool, and they're in the process of fixing the pipe. And, uh, it turns out that there was a winterization issue caused it to crack, and when the pool company looked at the procedure that they supplied Butte Silver Bow to winterize the pool, it was determined that it was an insufficient plan, and they are taking liability for the issue with the pool, and it will be under warranty, and it should be back up and running within a week or, uh, two weeks at the latest. They have to pour the concrete back, fix the pipe, pour the concrete back in place, and then put the surface on it and let it dry, and then, uh, but hopefully next week, towards the end of next week, it should be up and running, so we're hoping that will take place. So, uh, next we'll go to public comments on any items on the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Chief Executive, we'll go to the phone lines now and see if there's any call-ins.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Chief Executive, we do have one.
Okay.
Mr. Chief Executive, we have a phone issue tonight as well, so we will, uh, get that fixed, and I'll, I will start reading communications if you're okay with that.
That's great, thank you.
For the members of the public, we, uh, please call in, recall in here shortly, the phone lines will be, will be up. The first communication, Mr. Chief Executive, that I have is from Sarah Dimoni and others. Um, I'll, I'll read their names individually at the end. "Members of the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners, regarding agenda item twenty two, communication twenty twenty dash two five eight. Um, please accept this letter in support of the zone change application number one eight zero, communication number twenty twenty dash two five eight, and we support the Council of Commissioners to reject the recommendation of the zoning commission and move forward with the amendment to zoning ordinance and schedule a public hearing. We, the sign below, residents of Butte, support changing the ordinance to implement a requirement for conditional use permit for business, organization, nonprofit, or for-profit that are planning to open a community residential home, also may be called transitional living centers, treatment houses, developmentally disabled group homes, youth care facilities, residential treatment facilities, who want to either buy or construct a center in the residential area. The reason behind our support is simple. Montana state statute reads that an organization opening a community residential program can be located in any zoned area unless the city or town has a provision for a conditional use permit to be sought, thus giving the control to the local planning departments and governments. Through Commissioner Mankin's proposal, he is requesting that Butte Silver Bow implement a provision for a conditional use permit to be sought when a community residential program plans to locate in Butte Silver Bow. The intent is to ensure that the appropriate steps are taken for a home to be safely located in Butte Silver Bow. The most appropriate way to have, uh, community residential homes reviewed for this is by a conditional use permitting process. This process will add a layer of oversight that is needed in our community. Without it, the planning department has no control over the prescribed zoning in place. With it, the planning board and the planning department has the knowledge of who and in what neighborhood a licensed community residential home will be requesting to locate. We are asking for transparency through the conditional use permitting process, as this will give the neighborhood an opportunity to speak up and communicate concerns. Additionally, this will open the door for the community residential home and neighbors to talk openly about concerns and plans to live in harmony. We would like to be clear that we support all types of community residential programs. We support making, uh, sure the areas where they will reside are both appropriate and safe for public community residential program and the people in the neighborhoods, and the only way to ensure the peace of mind for potential neighborhoods is with a conditional use permit. Thank you for your time and attention. This was signed by fifty-nine residents. Um, Sarah Dimoni, Paul Blumenthal, Andrew Dimoni, Miriam Haley, Jocelyn Dodge, Lisa Howell, Noah Thatcher, Ross Richardson, Josh Sterns, Paula McGarvey, Deb Penner, Gene Rosson, Triciaus Southergill, Glenn Southergill, James Downey, Mary Colleen Hackett, Christie Gentry, Michael Boston, Avis Boston, Richard Rosa, Julie Rosa, Wayne Harper, Colleen Harper, Tony Harper, Lisa Sessions, Mark Stoffer, Mary Berg, Mark Berg, Hal Hubber, Julie Hubber, Tara Tim, Miranda Armstrong, Brian Grinnolds, Lynn Grinnolds, Ben Duert, Katie Duert, John Grinnolds, um, Dorinda Grinnolds, Kim Duddy, Jim Duddy, Reggie Daly, Donna Launey, Cindy West, Roy West, Vicky Bergman, Andy Bergman, Nancy Friz, Fritz, uh, DeBorglin Hall, Jason Kerriger, Joanna M. Launey, Barbara Gregovich, Margaret K. Launey, Daniel Kelly, Renell Richardson, Cody Hockaday, Kara Wesson, Paula Merrick, Mark Merrick, and Luke Anderson. The next communication is from Wayne Harper, as a citizen. Um, "In regards to the general laws and ordinances in Montana relative to conditional use permits and BSB's interaction with group homes. Um, facts, BSB is considering whether or not to have group homes and/or community residential facilities be subject to a conditional use permit process. Commissioners have been informed on much of the subject area and are accepting public input, please consider this meme as a pub, as public input. Issues are all, or number one, are all group homes, community residential facilities the same under Montana law? Question mark. Number two, can differentiations be made between various types of homes, i.e. foster versus addiction alcohol recovery homes? Question mark. The short answers to number one is yes. All group homes, community residential facilities are, are the same under Montana law, so as long as they have eight or fewer residents and have care provided on a twenty-four hour basis. Number two, yes. Pursuant to Montana statutory law, subsection seventy-six dash two dash four one two, Montana code annotated, and local ordinance, any homes under seven six dash two dash four one two, except for daycare facilities with under thirteen children can be addressed differently. Discussion, uh, seven six dash two dash four one two, MCA sets forth generally where specific group homes, community residential facilities are in Montana. Subsection one provides that any foster home, kinship foster home, youth shelter, care facility, or community residential facility serving eight or fewer persons is considered residential use of property for purposes of zoning if the home provides care on a twenty-four hour a day basis. I would note that such homes must also meet requirements of Title fifty-two, are governed by the state's requirements. Importantly, the homes noted in subsection one do not have to all be treated alike. MCA provides, "The section may not be construed to prohibit a city or county from requiring a conditional use permit in order to maintain a home pursuant to the provisions or subsection one if the home is licensed by the department." Emphasis added. Hope I'm reading this legal document correct. Um, "In my opinion, this means that the state law allows a recovery home for alcohol and drug abuse in the residential neighborhood, such as the proposed Spirit House, to be subject to a conditional use permit, while allowing foster homes or other homes be exempt." I could not, I could find no legal cases in Montana addressing subsection four of seven six dash two dash four one two, which ruled otherwise. A zoning process which includes a conditional use permit as proposed by Commissioner Mankins is therefore proper under Montana law. Further, it allows for the important and necessary communication among all involved in the impacted parties. Butte Silver Bow and its residents deserve to be informed of such plans to express concerns and receive accurate information. The Montana Department of Commerce through the Community Development Division provided local governments with an overview of zoning in the public process as recently as two thousand nineteen. In the section called Essentials Conditional Use Permits, the state provided the grounds for local governments to require conditional use permits in zoning, the state provided in its entirety. These are bullets. Bullet one, conditional use are those uses not permitted as a matter of right, but those which may be appropriate in zoning district under certain safeguards or conditions. Number two, can provide relief from strict requirements of ordinance. Number three, CUP process is intended to provide a detailed review of proposed development that could have adverse impacts in the community or neighborhood. And number four, in a residential district, examples of conditional uses could include a bed and breakfast, professional office space, law or medical, and neighborhood grocery stores. The state clearly notes the Montana statutes provide that a city or county can generally zone however it wishes, therefore noting all the parameters that require a conditional use permit and to whom such parameters will apply. Accordingly, as provided for in seven six dash two dash four one two, four supra, the city or county can allow or disallow any of the zoning categories listed from the conditional use permit process. This means without a doubt the foster care homes, kinship homes can be taken out of the conditional use permit arena. In the early nineteen ninety's, Kalispell and Flathead County Commissioners clearly set forth some limitations on what requires a conditional use permit. Therefore, in June of two thousand and ten, they added a new amended text to their ordinance providing section three point three four WV West Valley, three point three four dash zero three zero, conditional usage. Um, additional, animal hospitals, veterinary clinics, two RV parks with no tent camping, three camp and retreat center, four cellular towers, five class-three landfills, six communication towers, masts, seven golf courses and related facilities. Dwelling lots must be approved through the cluster provisions of these regulations. Eight gravel extraction, nine gun clubs shooting ranges, ten commercial hunting ranch for small game, eleven kennels, twelve neighborhood convenience store, C-related performance standards, thirteen commercial stables riding academities, fourteen temporary buildings or structures occupied one year or longer, fifteen public utility installation, major service area beyond neighborhood, and community residential facilities, and that was number sixteen. Kalispell, Flathead added caveats to the non-foster home facilities as to the number of residents before the process kicked in, leaving such facilities alone if they had under four residents. Obviously, Kalispell, Flathead were availing themselves of the codified language of seven six dash two dash four one two, four MCA, wherein they still wanted conditional use permit process for such homes if they had less than eight residents but more than four. Bozeman, Missoula, Livingston, and Belgrade are just a few of our neighboring sitting cities that have similar conditional use parameters that apparently take advantage of seven six dash two dash four one two. MCA entreat foster homes differently than other group homes. Simply put, foster homes can be specifically permitted without conditional use permit requirements, while other group homes cannot be denied outright. A process can be set by which such homes have to be addressed by the city-county. Belgrade's ordinance provides very good reasoning for having an intent and setting parameters. Eleven point two zero point zero one zero. Um, intent, the intent of conditional use permits is to provide for specific uses other than those specifically permitted in each district, which may be appropriate in the district under certain safeguards and conditions. This type of intent should be followed by BSB, and it should specifically permit foster homes within each district, but I believe it should require the conditional use permit process to be used on other potentially impactful homes. One last note is the Spirit House group home at issue. I have been informed that the Spirit House has already purchased and/or entered into a contract to purchase a home at the six hundred block of Galena Street here in Butte. They wanted to be completely above board. They wanted to be completely above board and transparent. Why would they be moving ahead so quickly before the council has the opportunity to fully discuss the matter and/or address the planning board's position? If conditional use permits were currently required, there would be no rumors, unanswered questions, or feelings that decisions are rushed and secretive. This is a perfect example of why such permitting is beneficial and necessary. I am very supportive of the home such as Spirit House is proposing, but I believe it should be subject to a conditional use permit for the benefit of all involved. It adds a layer of communication, transparency, and protection to the community and the neighborhoods here in Butte. I think having a conditional use permit process for such homes is a win-win for all involved. I'm gonna go to the phone systems right now and see if there's people there. And there is one, Mr. Chief Executive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Terry Ruggles. I live at six oh four West Park Street.
Thank you for calling in, Terry. Please state your comment.
Yes, thank you for your time this evening. I'm calling in about Spirit House coming into my neighborhood. I have a lot of concerns about this, especially how this has operated from the beginning under, I don't know, maybe subversive ways. Um, I didn't found out about Spirit House. I didn't find out about it until I talked to the woman who was selling the house to them. There has been no communication through them, Spirit House, with our community whatsoever, except I did get a pamphlet on my door, but I asked my neighbors and most of them didn't. My concerns I would like to address tonight um, are this model of care, really. I, I wanna tell you that I am a retired social worker. I worked for the state of Montana in mental health services for many years in Park and Sweetgrass County. I moved back to Butte a few years ago when I retired and became sick. My husband and I bought a house at six oh four West Park Street. Now, as a social worker, I am very aware of all the problems with this model of care and the problems that manifest when these sorts of businesses come into neighborhoods. Um, they become legal nuisances. I've done a lot of research around the state of Montana and other states so I could prepare myself with, um, for you and tell you some of the problems that are endemic with these sorts of businesses. And this is from research, again, from all over the state and the United States. So we found that there are increased numbers of recidivism. There is increased calls to police. There is an increase in drug and alcohol use. There's an increase in probation violations. There's also increases in confrontations with neighbors. These businesses operate without proper supervision, without staff with proper training, and they're not professional care providers. There is very little oversight from the state. I happen to know that because I worked for the state. Many consumer protection agency or issues arise and they put an extra burden on the law enforcement in these neighborhoods. There's also many problems with documentation on the client because you're not working with professionals and there is just absolutely no oversight of the place. Now, in your Butte Silver Bow growth policy, you state that the way in which commercial businesses can operate in neighborhoods needs to be supported by existing residents. So I would ask you as a resident, and I'm speaking for some of my neighbors as well here, we really want to have a voice in this matter because these businesses affect our property values, our families, and our neighborhood's safety. We need safe, decent, and livable places. And I would also add in, um, just in, in the end here, that I worked with sexually abused children. That was my job. So that means I worked with a lot of alcoholics and a lot of drug abusers because those two things always factor into abuse. I know that, that there eighty-five percent of drug and alcohol victims, or should I say, people who with those problems, always, they, they, um, they crash, they crash and burn within a year. And men are more likely to relapse than women. And my understanding is this home is for men. So those are my concerns. Um, I wish I had more time, but I wanna be succinct here and maybe I will address you again. I just hope, I, I hope upon hope that you all will do your research diligently as I have and please make it impossible for these sorts of businesses to operate within neighborhoods where we value our rights and our safety. And thank you for your time this evening. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Hey, thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Jen Delong, twelve twenty-three Steel Street.
Thank you. Please state your comment.
Um, one second. My husband was a little bit more part of this, but stepped away. Hey, Matt, give a moment. I wanted to say your statement.
Hi, this is Matt Delong, and I just wanna say I've, um, still with Eric Mankins moving forward with the zoning ordinance change and, uh, I have to reject the, uh, what the zoning board recommended last week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
This is Jim Downey at eleven oh one Platinum Street.
Hello, Jim. Thanks for calling in.
Thank you. I would like to, um, hello.
Hello. Go ahead, Jim.
Hello. Okay. I would like to, uh, see, um, have you reject, uh, um, zoning commissioners, um, and I would like you to move forward with Eric Mankins' idea. And this would not stop from opening any houses here. It would just give us neighbors a chance to voice our opinion and it would bring some transparency. And as I found out and as the last caller just stated that the, uh, the Butte Spirit bought a house on the six hundred block of Galena Street, which, you know, there was no transparency in that. And that's all we want is a chance to, um, voice our opinion and let everybody know what's going on. You know, we don't want our property values to drop and everything. So would you please look forward in, uh, in, in rejecting this? Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, thirteen thirty-one Steel.
Was that Ross?
Yes.
All right. Hello, Ross. Go ahead and state your comment.
I'm calling in support of Commissioner Mankins' proposal and against the recommendation of the planning board. Um, I would first like to state that, uh, I'm in support of these treatment facilities. Uh, my wife has a master's in mental health counseling and we support these organizations. However, uh, we strongly support the transparency that comes with Commissioner Mankins' proposal. Um, we have three young children and we try to be as, uh, aware as we can as what is coming into our neighborhood. And this, uh, proposal that Commissioner Mankins has allows that for us to address any questions or concerns we may have. Uh, I think as everyone was aware with, uh, the last home, there was a lot of misinformation and chaos and that's kinda why we are here today. Um, so I hope that everyone will consider his proposal and, uh, the transparency that goes along with this. And, uh, I also have Wayne Harper here with me. He would like to add a comment as well.
Okay. Hi, this is Wayne Harper, and my only comment would be that the law requires twenty-four hour care. And to my knowledge, no one has presented anything to the council of commissioners that says there's twenty-four hour care. And we're just in the dark on everything. And I think just transparency would say if we have a ordinance like, uh, a conditional use permit or whatever, that the transparency would be covered and everyone in Butte would know what's going on in their own neighborhoods. And I too am in support of it. It was read into the record that I'd just like to see it transparent so everyone involved knows what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. I hope I read your letter correct.
You did. You did fine, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jessie Bilquist-Jetty, six one seven seven Galen Road.
Okay, welcome. Please state your comment.
So I am calling to, um, to speak on item number twenty-two, which is communication number twenty twenty dash two fifty-eight, which would require conditional use permits for youth foster homes, youth kinship homes, um, and adult foster homes. While I understand these specific types of living situations are defined as community residential facilities under Montana code annotated, I do not feel that they should be included in this specific plan. I also understand that excluding them may not be possible if you require conditional use permits for all community residential facilities. Um, however, as Mr. Harper's letter had pointed out, it would be able to, um, there is a way that they can be eliminated from this conditional use permit. Um, while it seems that the goal of these permits is aimed more at regulating the other residential facilities that are defined in the Montana code, um, more than foster homes, I feel that you must consider the impact to all the facilities that would be required to obtain such a permit, um, as written. As a former foster parent, I feel you would be doing a huge disservice to the individuals and families wanting to obtain licensure as a foster home or kinship placement, as well as all of the children and adults in the foster care system. First, I find the, um, this conditional use permit to be a huge safety concern for foster and kinship families. Many foster and kinship families take children into their care who are removed from violent domestic situations and situations that involve violent or sexual offenders. If a foster or kinship home is required to obtain a conditional use permit, and they do, their address will be published and readily available in public records. I am not naive to think that this, that it is not difficult to find the addresses of essentially any person in this day and age, but having the address become part of a public record makes it that much more accessible to the biological parents of children in foster care to find. Some of these biological parents are violent or sexual offenders, and as a foster home placement, I would be very concerned that my home address could be easily accessed in public records. This puts all of the individuals living in a foster or kinship placement in an unsafe situation. In a worst-case scenario, I could envision this information being accessed by a biological parent so that they could locate their child and make an attempt to remove them from the foster placement, essentially kidnapping them, or to cause harm to the foster parents in retaliation for the removal of their child. Second, the decision to become a foster or kinship placement can be a very personal and intimate decision. Not all families want to share their decision to become a foster or kinship placement with their community. By requiring a conditional use permit for these foster and kinship homes, which will have the permit as part of a public record, you are seriously intruding on the privacy of these individuals. Thus, requirement of this permit may negatively influence individuals deciding whether or not to pursue becoming a foster placement. Foster placements are in a severe shortage and high demand already, and this permit process may lead to less individuals being willing to become licensed foster placements due to both the safety and privacy issues I have highlighted. It would be a huge disservice to your community to have the number of foster care placements decrease due to this permit process. As a former, um, licensed foster placement for the state of Montana, I know that the licensed foster placements are well-vetted through the Department of Health and Human Services, and the process to become a licensed placement is lengthy and intensive to begin with. Adding this additional permit requirement is going to negatively impact the number of individuals willing to become a licensed foster placement. I hope that you will seriously consider the impact, this impact, before approving, um, the zoning changes and that you would consider revising it so that foster and kinship homes are not part of the conditional use permit.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, this is Paula McGarvey, and I'm calling in from twelve forty-five West Steel Street in Butte.
Welcome, Paula.
Okay, well, thank you for, for listening to, uh, what we have to say. Um, I would like to say that I strongly disagree with the planning board's opposition to the council of commissioners' proposal to require the conditional use permit for these community group homes in residential areas. So I really wanna urge the council to reject the zoning commission's recommendations. It's my understanding that these, uh, conditional use permit would affect, uh, a variety of group homes, everything from foster care to housing for recovery, recovering addicts and alcoholics. And I think it's quite obvious that this is a very diverse group of people and that they have distinctly different needs and distinctly different impacts on the neighborhoods in which they'd be operating. Now, I think that in and of itself is a really good reason to require these conditional use permits because it will help us determine what's best for the neighborhoods and the residents of these group homes. Um, for example, this past year, when there was an attempt to open a recovery home on Platinum Street, it brought to light a lot of issues concerning the health and well-being of current neighbors and, uh, future residents of this home. Um, it also sparked and highlighted the need for this proposal. Um, issues included everything from that home's proximity to college students who have large parties with lots of alcohol, which would not be conducive to a recovery home. Um, also the tobacco use and how it would impact air quality of nearby neighbors, including myself. I was directly behind that home and I have health issues and things like safety of school kids due to the increased traffic that would bring. So again, had the neighbors not been vocal about that proposed home and their concerns, such as a conditional use permits requirement for community comment, that home would have begun operating and had ongoing and potentially negative consequences for both the residents of that home and neighbors living in this neighborhood. So I really believe that the decision about the proposal should be based on what will do the most good for all parties involved. And any delay due to processing and the comment period is gonna be well worth the time if it allows the group home operators and neighbors to bring their concerns and potential problems out into the open. So a conditional use permit would actually be in the spirit of the community's current and future residents' best interest. So again, I'm urging the commissioners to reject the planning board's recommendations and move forward with a proposal for conditional use permits in these residentially zoned areas. So that's all I've got to say, and I wanna thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Josh Sterns, ten forty West Porfry.
Hello, Josh. Please state your comment.
Um, so I'm calling in to reject the, um, recommendation by the zoning commission and move forward with the ordinance to, uh, for the zoning ordinance, uh, in the scheduled public hearing for that. The reason I'm calling is it's pretty simple, common sense, transparency. I think it's, uh, my line of work. It's easy to see one bad if we don't get the right people in or have an idea what's going on. A bad apple can ruin the entire. A bad apple can ruin the entire thing, so any legit business would want this kind of transparency. My, um, and lastly, um, I think if we have a chance to be able to protect our kids or citizens in this community, we should do anything we can to do that. So, thank the commissioners for your service and, um, just please, uh, consider going forward with their ordinance. Thanks.
Thanks Josh. Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is John Burke. I live at 1222 West Platinum. And the reason I'm calling is I'm asking you to support Mr. Manken's proposal and reject the proposal from the, uh, Planning Board. Uh, I think with the activity that we've seen in our neighborhood in the last several months and also what we're hearing about tonight with regard to what the lady said, uh, over on Park Street, that, that we need this, uh, conditional use permit type of, uh, mechanism to give us a very minimal amount of transparency so that we know what's going on in our neighborhood. So, uh, once again, I just ask you to support, uh, Mr. Manken's proposal and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Chief Executive, at this time, there's no other callers. So I'm gonna just continue on with the letters that I have to read if that's okay with you.
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you, Commissioner Morgan.
Okay, the next one is from Amerina Berciere, um, from Family Outreach Incorporated in Butte. To whom it may concern, uh, Zone Change 180 would require additional steps and pose barriers to families opening their home children in need. Uh, for that and many other reasons, I am opposed to an amendment of the zoning ordinance. The next one is from Julian Cernich. Dear Commissioners, as a former child in kinship foster care, I wholeheartedly believe in the importance of a caring family stepping forward to provide a safe, or a child a safe and secure environment. I do believe that without the structured caring environment I grew up in, I would not have been a, have, I would not have a college education, a 43-year marriage, and a stable employment history and be in a position to help others. Please reconsider your desire to have a one-size-fits-all and do not place additional requirements on families that are willing to open their homes to children in desperate need of emergency care. The next one is from Ben Cannon. Dear Commissioners, I'm writing to you concerning the proposed ordinance change for community residential facilities. I certainly understand and even applaud your commitment to making our community a better and more safe place, but I feel this proposed ordinance is misguided. My wife and I were foster parents for several years in both North Dakota and Montana, and despite being unable to continue to take children into our home, we continue to volunteer within the foster community. During this time, we have taken in children and infants addicted to meth, heroin, alcohol, and tobacco. We have taken in children that have been physically abused, sexually abused, neglected, ignored, and harmed in ways you cannot imagine. These children often lived in, live in fear of their parents or abusers. We have personally had parents track down my place of business and wait outside for me to exit with their child. We have been threatened and vilified for trying to protect innocent children. All that being said, our neighbors have no idea we were fostering children unless we told them specifically. We have had zero negative impact in our neighborhoods we've been in. Requiring foster families to post a sign in their yard and post their names, addresses in the paper puts the privacy and safety of fostered children and families at risk. The sentiments, uh, sentiment that the community has a right to know is to elist selfish, illicit selfish and completely misguided. The Montana Constitution states that the right of the individual privacy is essential to the well-being of free society shall not be infringed without the showing of a compelling state interest. You have no compelling interest in knowing where we live. Attempting to pass this is a broad overstep of your power and will only show how heartless and uncaring you really are. Excuse me, protecting the community means protecting the innocent, and this will only put them at risk. Ben Cannon. Excuse me. The next one is from Dakota Reiten. Uh, greetings. I'm writing to you concerning the proposed ordinance change for community residential facilities. I know you have the community in the best interest with new ordinances, but I think the result will cause more harm than good. My wife and I have very strong feelings about foster care and even plan to be foster parents in the near future. Though if future stipulations are soon to occur, we may be inclined not to fulfill that role. If we have to pay an extra fee to obtain a hundred-dollar permit from the city, have our names and address posted in the local newspaper or signs in our yard, I don't believe we will be able to commit to such a role. Not because it's difficult on us, but because of the danger it will impose on foster kids. I've first, or I've seen firsthand the desperation that many biological parents have and the dangerous, sometimes illegal actions they will take to be with their kids. I have been no bio-parents. I have seen how bio-parents stalk, threaten, and harass foster parents. I firmly believe that the safety of my own family while fostering and the safety of fostered children will be greatly jeopardized. Please rethink this proposal and do not pass this new ordinance. I do feel that anyone should have, or I don't feel that anyone should have a right to know where others live and absolutely feel like it is a violation of basic rights for these foster parents that already go above and beyond to ensure the safety of these kids. The next one is from Danielle Giacamino. Uh, Council of Commissioners, our foster care and kinship cares cases are growing. I understand the reason of trying to reduce them by 75%. However, respectfully, this is the wrong way to execute that plan. In my opinion, the reason my foster care and kinship care has gone up is because our drug problem keeps increasing. So what you are proposing is to make it more difficult for people wanting to help children by opening their home. It is already difficult enough to become a licensed foster care parent. Licensing can take up to six months. Uh, there are home inspections, continued training, et cetera. Not only in license, not only is licensing difficult, but whoever foster child, um, then is responsible for making sure that child receives adequate services to combat their trauma, mental, emotional, and physical. If these children are not removed from their homes when they are exposed to violence, drugs, and neglect, their outcome for a healthy life, if they survive, is not promising. Leaving children in traumatic living environments is going to cost more financially and physically. Think of the ripple-down effect for one second. A child that is left in an environment of instability is not, and is not nurtured. They do not develop a healthy mind. Most of the children exposed to this environment are then growing up with mental health problems. If you are familiar with mental hea- health, you understand that people develop self-coping mechanisms. One of the self-coping mechanisms is to use a mind-altering substance, substance that aids in taking the pain away. When young minds are not nurtured, their neural pathways don't form correctly. Don't, their cortisol limits and, and this throws their dopamine, serotonin, and neopine for in levels off. The neurotransmitters are responsible for emotional control, memory, impulse control, and many other very important functions. Drugs are utilized to make a person escape and feel good. The person using the drug gets the response they need because substance is increasingly above, um, mentioned neurotransmitters. So now the state is not only paying for foster care and kinship care, they are compiling budgets of inaccurate, or in inaccurate mental health services, addiction treatment services, et cetera. These adults have children and the trauma cycle continues on. Foster care and kinship care is not the problem. I've worked for WIC, a supplemental nutrition program for women, infants, and children, for six and a half years. We see at least 60% or more of these, or of our clients because they are referred to us from the Department of Child and Family Services. Before I see the foster care parents, I see the biological mom. Most of the cases that come across my desk for DFS are present danger removal. This means that it is due to drugs that the child or children are removed from their home. I've worked for community counseling and correctional services and interned with probation and parole for eight months on a co-occurring caseload. Both of, both of my biological parents battle with addiction. My father was incarcerated and don't have a foster, foster care and kinship care problem. We have a drug problem that needs to be taken care of. Housing children, um, should be funded instead of restricted. First and foremost, addiction treatment and mental health services should be funded. If 180 goes into effect, or 180, I can promise you your rate of 75% reduction in foster care and kinship care will increase death rates for children and more long-term drug use and mental health problems. The next one is from Case Weber, or Cass Weber, pardon me. Dear Commissioners, I write to urge you to, to follow the recommendations of the zoning commission to deny Zone Change Number 180. The change would negatively impact those wanting to become licensed foster or kinship homes. I am the coordinator of the 025 Collaborative for Butte Silver Bow and our collaborative, has chosen to focus our efforts on reducing the number of children in foster care in our cu- in our county. Please see the attached information to learn more about this. Our county has three times more children in foster care than the national average. To reduce the number, we need as many foster care and kinship homes in the area as possible. Children do much better if they stay close to their parents and it is preferred that they live in kinship placements in order to maintain connections with family, friends, and their community. This ordinance change will make 0 to 5 goals, or 0 to 5's goal to reduce the number of children in foster care much more difficult to achieve. I also write this request from a personal standpoint. My husband and I spent over two years as a licensed kinship foster parent to two nieces and a nephew. This was one of the most challenging times in our lives. We did not expect to take the children in when we did. If I think back to the first six months they lived with us, when we were working to become licensed by the state and imagine having to request a special use permit to keep them in my home, I know it would have been a huge burden and caused undue stress in an already stressful time. I can't imagine the pain we would have felt if a neighbor had complained about us choosing to take the children in from our family. Butte Silver Bow would be finding ways to help foster and kinship parents, not finding ways to additional barriers and create bureaucratic government interference when none is needed. Please reject the proposed change. The next one is from Cassandra Jangula. Um, thank you for taking the time to read this response to Resolution 20-06. This resolution is the intent to amend Title 17 zoning ordinance of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code. This would require a conditional use permit in order to maintain a licensed community residential facility in all residential zones within the city and county of Butte Silver Bow. I am highly against implementing this, especially since kinship and foster care homes would be included in this. I have several reasons why this would be impractic, impractical and cause undue hardship on foster care providers. Here in Butte Silver Bow, there are many kinship and foster care homes. In order to be a kinship or foster care home, the adults in the family must be able to pass a fingerprint background check, prove that the home they live in is big enough, suitable for children, and undergo training. They have a home study done. They get no assistance for the children until they are licensed. Once they have their license, they have some inspections by licensing at least two times a year. Then they also have caseworkers in their home once a month. They are required to have an ongoing training and cannot renew their license without an appropriate number of hours. These parents take in children at some point, or s- some of the most dire moments of their life. They may be given zero notice. If it is a kinship situation, it can take months for them to get licensed and they will not be receiving any financial assistance for the children while they are trying to get their licenses in place. Adding to, in cost of paying a hundred dollars to get a conditional use permit could cause financial hardship on the family and possibly delay them getting licensed as quickly as possible. It can also cause them to be out of compliance. If they get their license and then have to wait to get a conditional use permit, these permits cannot be denied. However, they can cause other people to refuse to become foster parents, which Butte Silver Bow is in desperate need of. Another factor that, that this is the name of the property owner, person, and what they are applying for, applying for will not only be listed in the newspaper, but also signed in their yard. Although this does not give up, give out the children's confidential information, it leaves the foster home as a target to disgruntled parents. Any parent who sees that a home is in, is in a foster home may take out their misplaced anger on that home whether or not their biological children is there, or child is there. Foster parents try to provide a stable, loving, and typical homes for children. How is posting their name and address going to be in, in support of this? Also, there is a stigma based on foster care children that this could cause the children in the house to be discriminated against in the neighborhood and at school. If a person is renting a home and the property owner does not have, or does not wish to have their name in the newspaper and a sign on their yard that they could tell people they can't rent from them if they are foster families, thus discriminating again against children in need. Passing this would be, would make it even harder to get people to foster in our community. Personal information would be posted for the world to see. There would be a cost to pay on top of all other things. It is more red tape to jump through since the permit cannot be denied. It would bring in cash flow for the county, but in the process would harm so many people. Several foster parents have already said if this passes, they will have to think long and hard about continuing to do foster care as it would put them in, and their biological children, at even more risk. In conclusion, I urge you to vote no to putting this into place. Voting no will help to keep my, or many families safe. The next one is from, looks like the Greeley Neighborhood. Um, this is R. Edward Banderob, 2601 Grand Avenue, Montana. President Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation Incorporated. In that, the proposal does not request that the local planning board not allow group homes. The proposal does not request the local planning board to violate state and federal law. Most foster homes probably would not even have to apply for a permit as they, as they do not exceed the occupancy number to require a permit. If there are more than eight occupants in a foster home, maybe they should have to apply for a permit. State licensing procedure has no requirement to inform the residences in the area of the intended group home. State law does allow such local special use permit procedures. All the local people are asking is that an appropriate local vetting procedure be established to determine the most appropriate locations for such group homes to be located. It is the function of the Butte Silver Bow Planning Board, who serves as the zoning commission, to decide special exemptions to the terms of zoning ordinances and resolutions. Therefore, we re- we request that this Council of Commissioners reject the recommendation of the zoning commission and move forward with the amendment to the zoning ordinance and schedule a public hearing. The next one is Ron and Joyce Keeks. Um, as a member of, or as a homeowner in Butte Silver Bow, I would like to recommend that there be restrictions for group homes in Butte. I request that they must have a special use permit to protect my property value. Thank you. Elizabeth Ann Banderob, 2601 Grand Avenue, Butte, Montana. As a property owner and resident of Butte, Montana, I am against the recommendation of the zoning commission to allow residential community group homes in any residential zoned area without a special use permit. Please reject the recommendation of the zoning commission. These homes must have a conditional use permit before buying property and opening a residential community home as we as residents should be made aware of where they want to establish a group home. The next one is from Carmen Hunter. My name is Carmen Hunter. I live at 2030 Adams Avenue in Butte. I am writing in regards to the proposed conditional use permit requirement for the residential facilities. As a foster parent of 15 years, I believe this change would adversely affect foster families and the children they care for. This permit would be a matter of public record, which would give an avenue for birth families to find out where their children are located. Though the child's name is not on the permanent, or is not on the permit, the foster care system is not good at keeping the foster parents' names private. This would be a serious safety concern and would alter foster families' ability to give children a safe home. I also believe that this is an addition, or this is added shaming for older children. and teens. In the application for this permit, the entire neighborhood, including potential peers, would be made aware that the children living in that house are foster kids. These children have already been through so much. Adding to that needlessly is unconscionable. Finally, this would be a financial burden to kinship families trying to support the children in their family. When a family member takes a child, they do not get a support check like foster parents get. They must get a foster care license first, six to twelve months' process. A grandparent on a fixed income would need to primarily support the children in their care and pay this fee. We shouldn't be adding hurdles in front of families willing to step up for children. The next one is Titus and Jacqueline Bergren. Uh, Council of Commissioners, please accept this letter as our written statement against zone change one eighty. As foster parents, we feel that the zoning change would negatively affect kinship and non-kinship foster families as well children in foster care. We believe that the zoning change will infringe on the privacy of foster families as well as the children in their care. Having names and addresses lis- listed in the paper when a permit is required and purchased will eliminate privacy and safety. It could give those we are trying to keep children safe from access to where they live having to sign, having a sign posted on our front lawn would also eliminate privacy and safety. Disgruntled birth families could retaliate on homes identified as foster homes. Children in foster care will be labeled by both adult neighbors as well as neighborhood children as foster kids. This could potentially alienate them from peers and impact self-esteem. We believe our community should wrap around our vulnerable children and the families that care for them rather than cause an additional hoop to jump through or financial burden. Requiring a permit could make the already long licensing process even longer. Kinship families who receive the notice before a child is placed with them and no financial help until they have gone through the licensing process may struggle to pay the hundred dollar required. We have a great need for foster families in our community, and we see the zoning change as a change that will greatly impact the number of foster families in our community in a negative way. Single-home families that are licensed through the state already go through rigorous background checks, paperwork, and training to become foster homes. CPS workers participate in monthly home visits and assess how things are going with the children placed in the home. There is accountability for kinship and non-kinship foster families. If things become challenging in in the home, these families need support from their friends, family, and neighbors, not shame and ridicule. We appreciate privacy and support as much as our neighbors do. Please vote against zone or zone change one eighty as it would negatively affect foster families and and our communities abused and neglected children. The next one is from Charles A. Hard or Harble, City Attorney of Kalispell. Eric, it was nice chatting with you this morning about the municipal process of evaluating group homes and the history of the or the history the city of Kalispell has experienced in this regard. The state statute and regulations for group homes for under eight individuals has been in place for many years and hasn't changed much, if any, over these years. As you know, the state mandated that municipalities may not deny this use in any of the residential zones of the city. Clearly, by preempting the authority of the municipalities in this matter, the state intended to send the message that, as a matter of public policy, it is best that these small group homes be situated in residential neighborhood environments. The mandate was also intended to quash the NIMBY mindset that often creeps into the land use discussions. Many years ago, before my time as the city attorney for Kalispell, the process our city took to reviewing group homes was to have the matter determined by the Board of Adjustments. The city had an application for a group home come before it, and for a reason no one can remember, the Board of Adjust- Adjustments simply denied the application. The matter was taken up to the district court, and the district judge right rightly held that the city did not have the authority to deny the application and ruled that the use would be allowed as a conditional use. Somebody must have felt some outrage for that decision or for that decision was appealed to the Supreme Court, which some similar help was upheld the district court and severely chastised the city for wasting its time on such a clear-cut issue. The city licked its wounds and determined that the district court was on the right track to treat these land uses as conditional uses. Therefore, the city zoning code was amended to include the small group home in all residential zones under the conditional use process. Once these parameters were defined and the governing body understood clearly that uh that the define that the use could not be denied but could be reviewed with public process in place and reasonable conditions could be required, life went on, much better than before. The elected officials could still be responsive to their constituents. The neighbors could still voice their concerns and be heard, and the applicants now had an even better opportunity to discover who their neighbors were and how to get along with them. The fact is that the applicants want their group home to blend into the neighborhood, and the last thing they want is a conflict with the neighbors. Because of this, they are generally quite happy to meet any reasonable conditions that are placed upon the use that make the use blend in better with the neighborhood. Your question about foster homes is interesting to me. I am aware that this term is used in the statute and regulations along with the eight-person or less group home. However, there is no triggering event that brings to the city's attention that a foster child is living in a home. Although the family and the home are scrutinized by the state to determine that this is a safe and healthy environment in which the foster child will live, the city has not put on notice to consider the matter. We have never had a neighbor call in with a zoning complaint because a foster child lives in the home next door. From the curbside view, the use has um has been and continues to be a single-family residence. City certainly does not exercise any process to, here we go with a legal term, soy ponte? Inquire into the blood relationship of the household for the purpose of exercising the foster home conditional use. So are we treating the small group home differently than the foster home? If we are, it is not an intentional discrimination. It is simply a matter of fact that group homes, generally operated by for-profit treatment centers, approach the city for conditional use permits, knowing that if they fail to do this, the chances are good that the neighbor will contact city to complain, and the city will then s- seek to have them come into compliance with the process. I say that the chances are good because the treatment center knows that the group home doesn't always come off as a purely single-family residence and can and conflicts can and sometimes do come up in the neighborhood. I hope some of this is helpful to you, Charlie. The next one is uh from Jesse Bilquist, um from Anaconda. Dear Commissioners, I would like to provide public input on item number twenty-two on June seventeenth, twenty-twenty, Council of Commissioners' regular meeting agenda, Communication twenty-twenty dash two-five-eight, which would require conditional use permits for foster homes, youth kinship homes, adult fos- foster homes. While I understand these specifics types of living situations are defined as community residential facilities under Montana Code, I do not feel that they should be included in this specific plan. I also understand that excluding them may not be possible if you require conditional use permits in all community residential facilities, and thus encourage you to research this issue further before you determine if the permit should be required and by whom. While it seems that the goal of these permits is aimed more at regulating the other residential facilities that are defined in MCA um than foster homes, you must consider the impact to all facilities that would be required to obtain such a permit. As a former foster parent, I feel you would be doing a huge disservice to the individuals and families wanting to obtain licensure as a foster or kinship placement, as well as all uh all of the children and adults in the foster care system. First, I find this conditional use permit to be a huge safety concern for fostering kinship families. Many fostering kinship families take children into their care who are removed from violent domestic situations and situations that involve violent and sexual offenders. If a foster or kinship home is required to obtain a conditional use permit, and they do, their addresses will be published and readily available in public records. I am not naive to think that it is not difficult to find the addresses of essentially any person in this day and age, but having the address become part of the public record makes it that much more accessible to the biological parents of children in foster care to find. Some of these biological parents are violence or sexual offenders, and as foster home placement, I would be very concerned that these that these biological parents are violence and sexual offenders, as I would be very concerned that my home address could be easily um assessed in public records. This puts all of the individuals living in fostering kinship placement in an unsafe In the worst-case scenario, I could envision this information being accessed by a biological parent so that they could locate their child in an attempt to remove them from the foster placement, essentially kidnapping them or to cause harm to the foster parents in retaliation for the removal of their child. Second, the decision to become a foster or kinship placement can be a very personal and intimate decision. Not all families want to share their decision to become a foster or kinship placement with their community. By requiring a conditional use permit for these fostering kinship homes, which will have the permit as part of the public record, you are seriously intruding on the privacy of these individuals. Thus, requirement of this permit may negatively influence individuals deciding whether or not to pursue becoming a foster placement. Foster placements are in high demand already, and this permit process may lead to less individuals being willing to become licensed foster placements due to both the safety and the privacy issues I have highlighted. It would be a huge disservice to our community to have the number of foster care place placements decreased due to this permit process. As a former licensed foster placement for the state of Montana, I know that licensed foster placements are well-vetted through the Department of Health and Human Services, and the process to become a licensed placement is lengthy and intensive to begin with. Adding this additional permit requirement is going to negatively impact the number of individuals willing to become a licensed foster placement. I hope that you are you seriously consider this impact before approving the zoning change. Mr. Chief Executive, that concludes all of the public input that I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan, for reading all those. You did a great job. All right, we'll move into section one, bid openings, public hearings, and/or presentations. Number one is the Communication twenty-twenty dash two-two-six. Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners for time on the June seventeenth, twenty-twenty, regular meeting agenda for a presentation on county-wide maintenance district work plan update for twenty-twenty, work plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Mr. Neary, will you with us?
Thank you, Chief Executive Palmer. Commissioners, for the record, I'm Mark Neary, Public Works Director. I want to thank you for your time tonight to, I'll give you this brief uh work plan update uh for fiscal year twenty-twenty and our and our uh work plan for fiscal year On the next slide there, Jason. So in on August first, two thousand eighteen, you, the Commissioners, voted on the passage of a single road maintenance district for the city-county. Uh, ordinance eighty-two requires a work plan update presented to you before the end of every June. Presentation will cover work that has been done in fiscal year nineteen-twenty and what projects the road division plans on fiscal year twenty twenty-twenty-twenty-one. Go to the next slide, please, Jason.
Thank you.
We've used five hundred twenty-seven point seven tons of salt, one thousand nine hundred and twenty tons of liquid de-icer have you been used on the city-county streets. The total cost of the salt and de-icer was three hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and twelve cents. Sixty-five miles of roads were plowed, four thousand nine hundred and fifty-five hours worked. Labor costs as of May thirty-first, twenty-twenty were one hundred seventy-seven thousand, four seventy-one, fifty-three, and the equipment costs were one thirty-two, three ninety, fifty-eight. This map here just shows our uh primary is in red, secondary are in green, and the MDT routes are in blue. Uh, the next slide is just a list of our primary routes. These are the routes we hit first when the snowstorms uh hit. Um, the road crews come out at four o'clock in the morning or whatever time the storm comes out. We hit these ones, and then we move into the secondary. There's two pages of those. And then the the third page are the MDT routes maintained by DOT. In the street cleaning in twenty-twenty, two hundred eighty-five miles of roads were swept, ninety miles of roads were flushed, four thousand two hundred forty-five man-hours worked. Total labor costs as of May thirty-first, twenty-twenty was one fifty-one, eight hundred sixty-nine, and the total equipment cost was one fifty-five, oh forty-three, twenty. In the patching since January first, twenty-twenty, six thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight potholes have been filled. From July first, nineteen, May thirty-first of twenty, seventeen thousand seventy potholes were built, two thousand one hundred and eighty-four man-hours worked. Total labor costs as of May thirty-first, twenty-twenty was seventy-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-seven, fifty-three, and the total equipment costs were twenty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. The next slide just kind of gives a rundown of patches that we have done since uh two thousand sixteen. They just seem to increase, but I think we're getting a good panel. Next slide, Jason. Uh, in traffic, total of one thousand eighty-five traffic control signals and flashes are maintained. Replace, replace, repaired, or installed forty-seven street and traffic signs, four thousand seven hundred and thirteen man-hours worked. Total labor costs as of May thirty-first, twenty is one hundred sixty-seven, four seventy-three, fifty-three. Total equipment costs as of May thirty-first was twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and nine cents. The next, next sheet is kind of a rundown of the labor hours tracked as of May thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Uh, the total was an estimated cost through uh May thirty-first, and it was one million, four hundred and forty-four thousand. On the next page, actual costs as of five thirty-one, one million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-six even, and that cost will change, you know, through the end of June. For the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, uh, we plan on sixty-five total miles of primary and secondary routes, both by tertiary neighborhoods as we're able, de-ice and sand primary and secondary routes. We plan on spending two hundred eighty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars on de-icer and salt, fifty-five thousand dollars in overtime for snow removal. The estimated labor cost is two hundred thousand, estimated equipment cost is one hundred and thirty-five thousand. For the summer, we plan on two hundred eighty-five miles of roads to be swept, ninety miles of roads to be flushed, increased pothole repair, rural road maintenance, estimated labor, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, estimated equipment cost is one hundred and fifty-five For our potholes, we have one hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars planned for asphalt pothole repairs, estimated labor is eighty thousand, estimated equipment is thirty thousand. So the the total cost is uh one million, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Eighty-five percent of that is one million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and zero cents. Um, it's an increase of twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars higher than last fiscal year. But we don't plan. And that's my presentation. I would like to uh- I would like to thank Angie Mulligan and Jennifer Kearns for getting all the numbers together for me, and Danette and Karen in the finance and budget team who keep us in line and keep us on track, and I'm open to any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Neary. Any questions from the Commission for Mr. Neary, Commissioner Sorge?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Mr. Neary, how are you to determine equipment costs?
Commissioner Sorge, we have an estimated, now, Danette might have to step in on this, but I think we have an estimated cost on our rental. There's a, I don't know the exact term for it, but we have a Danette, can you help me here?
Sure. We use the FEMA standard rate guide that is published every couple of years that is out there, and they adjust it because the FEMA rates most often include an operator of the equipment, and we have our own operator, so we adjust off that hourly rate for an operator.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, I don't see any other questions, so thank you, Mr. Neary.
It's Mark for the information.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Next, we'll go to Section 2, the Consent Agenda, A. 1 through 4, and B. 1 through 22. Do we have any segregations or friendly amendments? Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I would like to segregate number 17, 20-253, number 18, 20-254, and number 22, 20-258.
Any further segregations? Okay, I don't see any more, so Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve Section 2, the Consent Agenda, A. the Committee Reports, 1 through 4, B. Communications, 1 through 22, with the exclusion of number 17, 20-253, number 18, 20-254, and number 22, 20-258.
Second.
Do we have a motion made and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda, A. 1 through 4, and B. 1 through 22, exclusive of number 17, number 18, and number 22? Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
One second. One person just needs to hit submit. Please make sure you hit submit at the bottom. Twelve yea, zero nay.
Motion carries. First, we'll go to Communication number 17, 2020-253. Mark Neary, Public Foster Director, requesting Council of Commissioners to authorize the Chief Executive to sign the Core and Main Agreement for DUI Base 3 Materials for the Water Utility Division. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. The next two communications, number 17 and 18, I was contacted by the Public Works Department, and they want to hold, or they don't want us to take action on this, as they are looking for more details into both of them. So, at this time, I would just make a motion that we note Communication 2020-253 and place it on file, and then Mr. Neary will be submitting another letter at a later time.
Second.
Do we have a motion made and seconded to note Communication 2020-253 and place the communication on file? Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Looks like we have 11 yea. And Commissioner Anderson, we need your vote.
I voted yea.
Okay, so 12 yea, zero nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll go to number 18, Communication 2020-254. This one is Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize Chief Executive to sign Northwest Pipe Piddings Agreement for the big hole transmission line materials. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. As indicated earlier, I would just make a motion that we note Communication 2020-254 and place on file, and Mr. Neary will be submitting a new letter at a later time.
Second.
Do we have a motion made and seconded to note Communication 2020-254 and place the communication on file? Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Looks like we have 12 yea, zero nay.
Motion carries. Next, we'll go to number 22, Communication 2020-258. Lori Casey, Planning Director, requesting Council of Commissioners to be advised that the Butte Silver Bowl Planning Board, who serves as the Zoning Commission, has rendered a recommendation regarding Zone Change Application number 180 regarding Licensed Community Residential Facilities. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I segregated this communication mostly because my recommendation was to concur and place on file, but there was two suggestions or two options in the letter. So, the simple concur and place on file, I just wanted to, you know, clarify which one I was looking at, but before I make a motion, I believe I would just open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners.
Any questions on the communication? Don't see anyone raising their hands, so I just want to be able to move on this. I would like to ask the county attorney one thing, just to clarify in my mind, that it's understood that these zone change or the special use permits or conditional use permit cannot be denied, but I was wondering if foster homes could be separated from the requirements of that and just go with the different types of group homes or any type segregated out of whatever zone change made up? Any Attorney Joyce?
Here, on mute, Eileen. Started my video, not my sound. You are. Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioners, so my opinion is that they cannot be excluded, and the basis for that opinion is just based on the language of the statute itself. So, if you look at Section 76-2-412, the Montana Code Anticipated, that's the statute that talks about the relationship of foster homes, kinship foster homes, youth shelter care facilities, youth group homes, community residential facilities, and daycare homes to zoning. And the statute basically, as you indicated, Mr. Chief Executive, it says that those types of homes, including community residential facilities serving eight or fewer persons, is considered a residential use of property, and then it further states that those facilities are permitted in all residential zones. As indicated by the letter that was read into the record by the city attorney in Kalispell, and by an opinion that we also received from Kelly Lynch, who is the attorney for the Montana League of Cities and Towns, you cannot deny these uses in any residential zones. It's based on that language in the statute, and there was also a case, as Mr. Harbell indicated in Kalispell, that also the Montana Supreme Court reiterated that those types of homes are permitted in all residential zones. So, the last section of 76-24112 says, however, that a city-county may not, the section that says that they're permitted in all residential zones may not be construed to prohibit a city-county from requiring a conditional permit in order to maintain a home, if the home's licensed by the Department of Public Health and Human Services. And the only exception is that you can't require a conditional use permit in order to maintain a daycare registered by the Department of Public Health and Human Services. So, when you look at the whether or not foster homes and kinship homes are the type of facilities that are licensed by the Department of Public Health and Human Services, this statute in Title 76 refers you back to Title 52, and that has a definition of a foster home, and it also has a definition of a kinship home, and those homes are ones that provide substitute care for up to one to six people, and they also are required by Section 52-2621 to obtain a license. So, it says that in that section, if I can A license is required for all youth care facilities, and a youth care facility includes foster homes, kinship foster homes, youth group homes, youth shelter care facilities, childcare agencies, transitional living programs, and youth assessment centers. So, because foster homes and kinship homes are included in the definition of the homes that would be required to get a conditional use permit because they are licensed by the Department of Public Health and Human Services, and they're not exempted from the requirement, I don't see how you can exclude them from this conditional use permit process. And I think that if you listen to Mr. Harbell's comments, he basically said that the question has really never come up in Kalispell, and he says, you know, are we treating them differently? Well, they're not doing it intentionally, but I guess my only caution to the council, because that's my only role here, is to advise you of any potential legal implications, is that you don't want to be put in a position where you're being accused of selective enforcement. So, if there was a transitional living facility that didn't apply for a conditional use permit, if you did pass an ordinance that required it, and you then were going to initiate, you know, a complaint against them, you don't want them to have an argument to say, well, why aren't you enforcing that against other entities that didn't apply for a conditional use permit? And that's just something that I think you need to take into consideration.
Thank you, County Attorney Joyce. Any other comments or questions from the council? Right here, Donna.
Thank you, Ms. Chief Executive. My question would be for County Attorney Joyce, and if Ms. Casey's on the call too as well. My question would be the signboards that we put out for the public notice or the neighborhood notice of a usual zoning change application ordinance. We put a sandwich board on the property. Is that mandated by law, or is, in the case of a foster home, if they're just listed on the agenda at the planning board or the zoning board of adjustments, does that suffice public notice, or is it required that the sandwich board be placed on the property?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner McDonough, what's required by law is that there is a legal notice with the information published in the Montana Standard, a paper of the general circulation. We have done the sandwich boards to post the property because we, you know, a number of years ago, we were accused of the neighbors not being made aware of our agenda items because not everybody gets or reads the Montana Standard. So, we went to those sandwich boards.
Thank you, Lori. Commissioner Mankin?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, I was just going back to reiterate what Attorney Harper was saying with his comments. If, according to the conditional use permit 76-4-412, Section 4, Supra, the city or county can allow or disallow any of the zoning categories listed from the conditional use permit process. This means without a doubt that foster care homes, kinships, homes, et cetera, can't be taken out of the conditional use permit arena, as has Kalispell done, and Belgrade, and a new, and a couple other ones. So, I could you define what number four means then, if that's not what it reads?
County Attorney Joyce?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Mankins? So, I think I said in my prior comments what I think it means, and essentially, I don't think that Kalispell has said that they have excluded foster homes from their definition. What Mr. Harbell said in his comment was that they just have never had that issue come up, where they've never had anybody complain about it, and they're not suis sponte, meaning on their own, going to go out and investigate. But I'm saying that if you did have somebody complain about a foster home and not getting a conditional use permit, or you pass a law, pass an ordinance, you do so with the intent that everybody's going to follow the law, and what I think that subsection four says, you have to read it in conjunction with the rest of the statute, and so it says, basically, in the beginning three sections of the statute, that conditional use permits that include foster homes and kinship homes and community residential facilities serving eight or few people are considered a residential use of property for zoning, and that those facilities are permitted in all residential zones. And then number four says, that doesn't mean that even though they're allowed in all residential zones, that you, that a city or a county can't require a conditional use permit in order to maintain such a home if it's licensed by the Department of Public Health and Human Services. I don't see anything in there other than the last sentence of that statute that says a city or county may not require a conditional use permit in order to maintain a daycare registered by the Department of Public Health and Human Services, any other exception to the requirement to get a conditional use permit, if that's the requirement that a city-county puts on facilities that meet the definition of a community residential facility, and foster homes and daycare, or foster homes, youth shelter care facilities with group homes, and kinship foster homes are listed in the title of that statute, and they are included as facilities that are licensed by the Department of Public Health and Human Services, and therefore would be required to get a conditional use permit, and there isn't anything in this statute that says they could be treated differently or excluded from the requirement as a traditional, as a transitional living facility.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I mean, there's a lot to this, and, you know, we currently right now have three attorneys that are giving us, you know, their opinions. We do have to remember that our chief legal counsel is County Attorney Joyce. I mean, if things go down, we're going to have to refer to her for our legal advice. We can't contact the attorney in Kalispell and ask him how he would do that, so we have to kind of keep that in mind. My comment is kind of to walk through the process of how this would work, and I'm going to rely on Ms. Casey to kind of guide me down the path. In the event that John Doe Um, in the event that John Doe wants to open up either one of these facilities or a foster home, the process for them would be to go, if this passes, if this goes through the, through the zone change, they would go to the planning board and they would file something with you for a conditional use permit. At that point, you guys would go through and do your normal fact finding mission and come back with a recommendation. At that time, there would be the public notice, um, with the sandwich boards as Mr. or Commissioner McDonough alluded to. Um, and, and I for one, again, to show how long I've been here is, is I, I was one of the ones that one of the commissioner, one of the constituents was upset that they didn't know about it because we not, we used to not use those large yellow signs. It was a pretty small white sign that you, you wouldn't see unless you were really looking for it, so I remember that. But those signs would go up, those yellow signs, and we can't have foster families not have the signs and the other ones use the signs because that is treating them differently than the other ones. And, and Ms. Casey can tell me if I'm incorrect in saying that as well. So anyway, they go to the zoning board and they apply for this conditional use permit. The zoning board at that point realizes that they can't deny those permits. And so do the applicants. They know that no matter what happens, unless there's something, you know, that's outside of the zoning rules that is something different, they can't be denied for it. And so it really is just a matter of process. This process would go through and add for public input. This public input, I believe, is the same public input process that this body follows, that there's no banter back and forth. So they would simply get up to the podium, the public would state their concerns or whatever be a proponent or opponent. They wouldn't have any of their questions answered, it would just go into the public record. And then the zoning board at that time would vote on however they see fit, wholeheartedly knowing that unless there's some reason, they can't deny it. Now, the challenge that I have with it is, is, is I've been told that nobody on zoning is ever going to deny this because we are telling them today that they can't deny it. Well, what happens 10 years from now when maybe none of us are at, at the council meetings or on the zoning board and somebody gets a lot of public input from their constituents just as we've done here and says, you know what, I'm gonna roll the dice and, and try to get this denied and they get other members of the zoning to follow them. People shake their heads and say it's not gonna happen, but it can happen. I've, I've seen the way that bodies change their votes all the way through. And, and so I think that's something to consider. The other thing that came out tonight with one of the comments is, is this zoning change allows for public input. But we've heard tonight that they want us to use the zoning change, the conditional use permit, to deny the request on one of the comments. And, and that's just something that isn't, can't be used. So it's gonna make people think that this process is going to allow the opportunity for the thing to be denied. And I just wanna make sure that the public knows that this is not something that gives them the, the tool to deny it. Ms. Casey, did I go through that process okay or did I miss any steps?
Lori.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Morgan, you, uh, pretty much got the whole process. The only thing is, is after the public comment, the board does have, uh, board discussion prior to making their vote.
Commissioner Morgan, follow up?
Just one follow-up question with that too. The, the other thing that I've been told is just because the public, um, gets up and speaks, that the board members won't make their decision based on the public input that they received. But it kinda goes back to, once you hear something, you can't not hear it again in your mind and it's gonna be hard to try to form your decision of not hearing what the public input was. And, and that's kinda the challenge of it, so, thank you.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. So one, one, I have two questions. One question being that the sandwich board, that's not, uh, we don't, by law, that doesn't have to be up? My first question.
Ms. Casey.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner O'Neal, I, by state law, that does not have to be up. I would have to look, uh, it, we do have some advertising in the bylaws of the zoning board of adjustment. Like I, I explained before, we do that in an effort to, so that all parties, especially, um, the closest neighbors will know that there is a hearing on something.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. On the follow-up of that being, then, yeah, maybe this is to the county attorney, would we be able to literally, if for foster care in that matter, we don't have to put a sandwich board up then? It's not the law. We, we can change that, can't we? We can, we're, it's, or, or we just take it all from the other one, okay? We could just, we don't have to put sandwich boards up for anything. If it's not the law, I mean, that, that's a question for me, just a, a question and a comment.
County Attorney Joyce.
Uh, Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner O'Neal, as Lori indicated, I don't know if there's something in there, um, bylaws or anything that require that, but, um, you are required to follow the state law, uh, in regard to zoning regulations, um, and you, you can never be less restrictive than state law, but you can be more restrictive. So I, you know, I don't, you don't, you're not required to do it by state law, whether or not we have anything in our local ordinance that states that, um, I'm not sure of. Sounds like from what Lori's saying, it may not be in the ordinance, but may just be in their, their procedure, just as a additional, you know, public notice sort of, uh, process. But, yeah, it wouldn't be required unless it's in our ordinance somewhere. And it's, uh, something that the zoning board feels is an additional, um, more restrictive requirement in order to make sure that the public's aware of what they're doing.
Follow-up, Commissioner O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Chief. So in my opinion, um, to my understanding, we can pick and choose when we have a public hearing on what ones we can then. If we, if we chose on the law to say, hey, we wanna have sandwich boards because we're not doing, people aren't knowing about getting notified about this, then rightfully so we can. We can say, hey, on, if, if a home's, like the house down the street right in our area, um, that, yeah, we can pick and choose if a sandwich board goes in front of that versus a foster care one. Cause we, we chose to do that. Am I correct on that? These are questions, but that's kinda what I feel, so thank you.
County Attorney Joyce.
Um, Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner O'Neal, just to make sure I understand your question, um, so we, we can't pick and choose when we have a public hearing, if there's a, or, you know, a public meeting on different types. But if you're just talking about the type of notice that we give regarding whether or not the, um, matter before the zoning board, um, or I guess would be, is it the zoning board, the planning board, whoever would be hearing these, um, I think, um, type of requests, um, Lori, Casey just advised me that it is in our ordinance that we do require a sign. Um, so I don't think that you can decide that if it's in the ordinance that you're gonna treat one type of a public meeting different than another one. I mean, one type, a matter that's before their board, in terms of the notice that you're gonna give different than the type of notice you're gonna give regarding another one.
One more follow-up, Commissioner O'Neal.
Thank you, this'll be the last one, I hope, thanks to you. And I'm not, I'm just trying to understand this too. If it's not, we've been hung up on state law this whole time on what we can and can't do for, versus foster homes and versus, um, transitional homes, other homes that, again, what's unfortunate is the foster homes are being stuck in this, okay? So that, that's what we're having. We're not trying to, to, um, kick the foster homes or make that process any worse than it already is. We're not trying to do that. The whole idea is the commercial use of, um, multiple, um, addicted houses, halfway houses, that's, that's the whole idea. So if in our ordinance, ah, I'm just trying, I need to think, really think about this. Let me, let me write some things down, I'll get back to you this week or the next. But I hope you see where I'm going with that. That, it's between state law and it's between our ordinance. Um, the whole goal is to, um, do the right thing for the safety for everybody, children and everything, and is what everybody spoke here on the phone. So I, I, I need to gather here and, and get a better, better argument, if you will. I'll be back, so thank you.
Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. You know, I think we all have a great concern with the, of the, uh, foster homes. So I think that's, you know, we, uh, have a lot of questions, you know, as well. Uh, I got a couple of questions also. Uh, one is for Lori Casey. Lori, you know, I heard tonight that, uh, to become a, a licensed foster care provider for the state of Montana may take six months to a year. Would that be prior or post or getting a special use permit, would that be after you get the special, or the, uh, license from the state of Montana? Or would that be conjunction at the same time, uh, so it doesn't extend that, you know, uh, license from the state? Is that clear as much? Thank you.
Um, Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Sorge, uh, the conditional use permit would apply only to licensed facilities. They probably could do it in conjunction with their other licensing.
Okay.
Their state licensing, if that's what you're asking.
Yes. And so would not, so it wouldn't extend the time, you know, to get, for somebody to get that state license that you would, that you would see?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Sorge, uh, no, not if, not if they're doing it at the, in conjunction.
Then I got, I just got one more question also.
Follow-up, Commissioner Sorge.
Follow-up. Okay, so then if we're gonna be charging a fee for a conditional license and it can't be, and it can't be denied, what are we getting, what is the fee for? I mean, what, what are we paying the fee? I mean, what is the fee we're gonna be doing?
Usually pays for staff time and, uh, everything else, all the paperwork and, uh, the legal notices that have to go into the Montana Standard or the daily circulation and, uh, items like that. Usually we're losing money on it, you know?
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Executive, Farmer. Um, I thought I'd throw my two cents in. The idea, the sandwich boards that Commissioner O'Neal was bringing up, uh, you can't put them in front of foster homes, uh, not put them in front of foster homes, but put them in front of adult homes and things like that. The thing is tonight, we heard a lot about transparency. So if you're talking about transparency, why would you wanna hide something that's public notification? You think you'd want transparency, that's what they're all talking about. So to answer that question, the sandwich boards are a great idea, they notify the public and that is transparency. The other side of the point is, we're making this decision and it's state law. And we're gonna go back to where we started this in February, way back. If you really wanna change this, you should go to legislature and get it changed so the foster homes and these other homes are segregated a little differently. Right now, what we're doing by passing this ordinance, in my mind, is we're making an ordinance that is non-enforceable. We just can't enforce it. Anyone who applies cannot be denied. So why would we wanna put our planning and zoning, have people go to meetings like we're at tonight, go through all this stuff and then have it so it can't be denied anyhow? And the thing about this, if they do deny you, our county attorneys tell us, beware, you could be in for a lawsuit. So in my mind, we're way ahead of this. We've gotta go back and have the legislature do this for us. And that's where this should begin. We're trying to follow suit. And I can't say for sure that Belgrade, Bozeman, only one I've ever heard that has anything like this is Kalispell. And I think their county attorney, whoever wrote us that letter, made it very clear in the case where, uh, the family, the Matt or whatever the name was versus Kalispell. That ruling by the Supreme Court in 1984 says it all. If anyone don't read that and get it clear as day, I think we're making a big mistake. And I just think, in order to make this right, we gotta honor the foster homes and separate them from the other half of what we wanna do here. And I think this is a tough decision for us to make. Thank you for letting me have my input.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Olson, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yes, I did. Uh, this is a, a question for, uh, County Attorney Joyce. Um, in the, let me find it here, um, Section four, I'm a little bit confused because there's a double negative at the beginning of that section. This section may not be, may not be construed or prohibited. And in, in my logic, it says, if you have a double negative, you can take the two negatives out. And so is it actually, this section may be construed to allow a city, or, uh, city, county from requiring a conditional use permit? Is that a correct way to interpret that?
County Attorney Joyce.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Olson, if your question is, is city county allowed to have a conditional use process permit in order to maintain a home, then the answer's yes. That's what that means. It says that, but you have to remember that first thing that we, uh, are required to know is that they are allowed in all residential facilities. But what the, um, city attorney in Kalispell is basically saying is, we know that, we know that they're, we can't deny them, but we think in our, um, community that it still allows, um, people to come forward and state, uh, you know, concerns or whatever, and then the applicant can listen to those concerns and, you know, whether or not they will tweak things, um, or whatever. But the only thing that a conditional use permit can do is make conditions on the use of the property. So I think Ms. Casey could speak to this better, but, you know, that means like parking spaces, maybe hours of operation, um, those kinda things. It's not who lives there, but what the, um, conditions of the use of the property are. If that makes sense.
Follow-up, Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chief Executive. I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, um, Section four, does it say that we have to have a conditional use permit to, in order to, uh, to, uh, approve these? I'm just thinking that this basically says what this, the, the same thing it does for the daycare below, but it says it, it's a may and not a shall.
County Attorney Joyce.
Um, Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Olson, basically what it says is that it's, you may, you may decide that you wanted to use a conditional use, um, permit process, but you're not required to. And the only time that you can't require it is for daycares. And it's my understanding, and maybe, uh, Ms. Casey could weigh in on this more, is that the city of Kalispell and the county of Kalispell are the only ones that, um, we were able to locate that do require the conditional use permit.
Ms. Casey, did you wanna add to that or no? Take that as a no, or your mic's still muted?
Your mic's off, Lori. Sorry about that, I have two buttons to, on this one to do. Um, Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Olson, County Attorney Joyce is correct. We, when this was first in the Judiciary Committee, I did some research on the seven major cities, uh, Great Falls, Missoula, Bozeman, Helena and of the, and Kalispell. And of those cities, Kalispell was the only one that required a conditional use permit. The remainder of the counties, uh, operated the same as we do currently and that is to consider them a residential use and, uh, as such, they're considered a permitted use without going through any type of process.
Commissioner Anderson, you had your hand up?
I, I did, thank you. I I, I did. Thank you. I was listening to that and I was, I, I had a question and I'm just trying to figure out how to put it together. So let me understand this. We have certain, we can't put conditions on things. So when somebody does go before the board, they have to be approved. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing? Yes. And so, but in some instances, we do put restrictions and other things on top of it, like parking spaces, like exits, you know? I can't say I want to have a restaurant and a gas station and it's automatically approved. I have to show that I'm meeting and following certain procedures and protocols. So how is this different? Why can't we put on certain restrictions for this? We keep on going back to, uh, back to childcare, uh, daycare and the kinship homes and foster homes. They have twenty-four hour supervision. If not, the state's going to take away the right. Why won't these homes for treatment have to have twenty-four hour supervision? Why are we just letting these people, uh, why are we just letting this go without the supervision when we can put those? And I think this is what, and please tell me if I'm wrong, but I think one of the big things what we wanted to do, what Eric wanted to do with this and what a lot of the people wanted to do with this, is put those restrictions in place and for them to have a say in it. We're not saying we're going to make this. We don't want this at all. We want to have a say. We want to have input in it. And we want to have some restrictions to protect the neighborhoods where the families are, you know? We, we don't want to just have a bunch of people running around willy-nilly. We want restrictions on there. We want certain safeguards in place to keep our neighborhoods and our children in these neighborhoods safe. So why can't we put restrictions on this? That's basically the question, not, uh, asked very eloquently, I apologize.
I guess that's a whole discussion for the, not tonight, that we've been talking about for the last several minutes, maybe an hour or so. But, uh, you can, if this thing is approved and you decide that you're going to require a conditional use permit, you can put, or the zoning board can put conditions on it, but it also involves all of the foster homes. And that's where the big problem lies. County Attorney Joyce wants to add to that? Feel free.
Um, Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Anderson, I think maybe Ms. Casey could, um, explain a little bit in better detail what kind of, um, conditions are allowed under a conditional use permit. But as I stated before, that it, it's not going to relate to what the people do. I mean, you're not going to, through a conditional use permit, stop people running around, you know? It has to be related to the use of the property itself. So I think Ms. Casey could probably, um, explain a little better what kind of conditions, uh, would be ones that, um, they would consider.
Mrs. Casey, would you like to add?
Sure. Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Anderson, first, under the state requirement of licensing, these facilities do have to have twenty-four hour care. Um, that's part of the definition in seventy-six, two, four, twelve, um, subsection number one is all the community residential facilities serving eight or fewer persons is considered a residential use if they provide home care on a twenty-four hour basis. In regards to the type of conditions that can be put on, the law is clear that these are a residential use for the purposes of zoning. So therefore, when you analyze the application, you're going to analyze it as a residential use. So you would put similar conditions such as on a residential use. Uh, as, uh, County Attorney Joyce stated, that could be, um, making sure that they have enough off-street parking, uh, that the home is adequate, that meets a building code for occupancy level. That's also a requirement of the licensing with the state. So there, you have to, um, have conditions that are similar that you would place on any other type of residential facility.
Commissioner Morgan?
Follow up if I could real quick.
Okay, jump in there Bill with a follow up.
Uh, if the house or this group home or whatever we're talking about here, regardless of what it is, alcohol treatment or anything, can you put certain conditions on it in a specific manner that relates to what it is? For say like childcare, can you put restrictions where it's not within X amount? I know for like schools, you can't have a bar within X amount of feet of, of, uh, of, uh, someplace that serves alcohol, a beer or what have you. We ran into that issue a couple of times. And I've seen that a few times. You know, you can't open up a marijuana shop or dispensary within X amount of feet. Can we put restrictions on these homes when they pop up where they cannot open up within X amount of feet of certain businesses? Or is that, is that something you can do with the rules or not?
Lori or County Attorney Joyce?
Uh, Lori, do you want to go ahead? I can jump in.
Sure. Um, Mr. Chief Executive, um, Commissioner Anderson, you, I don't believe you could because when you are putting conditions such as a bar can't be located near a school, you're looking at that as a commercial property. These properties have to be looked at as a residential property. And residential properties can be located near schools or different, uh, type of things. So no, I don't believe that you could place that based on who's in the home or, or, or what it is, a foster home versus a, uh, halfway house.
One more quick follow up.
Commissioner Olson.
If it's, uh, what's the difference then between a commercial property, what's there to make money and one of these residential house treatment facilities that is there, I believe, to make money for the owners or the groups that manage it? I just, what would be the answer to that question?
Um, Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Anderson, the law is clear that these are to be considered residential uses for the purpose of zoning. So that's the difference. If you're a commercial entity, the law doesn't specifically call it out as a residential use where for community residential facilities, the law specifically does.
Commissioner Morgan, you were next.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. The only thing that else that I want to mention here is, and so we're all, all on the same page. This, this communication adds the conditional use permit that only adds really the public comment period of it. It doesn't add anything else. A- as we were told on a phone call today, this conditional use isn't going to, um, decide if these houses are beneficial, if they're instructing people correctly, any of that type of stuff. It doesn't question that at all. It adds the public input portion of it to the zoning board. And again, I'm, I'm telling you that it's not a banter back and forth. It's they get up, they say their comments and then they move on. It's not a adding all these conditions into it, um, like we're even trying to talk here, so.
Thank you. Commissioner McDonough, you were next, and then Commissioner Sorge.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Um, so I've, I've obviously been in support of this since the beginning, uh, with Commissioner Mackens's request. I attended the neighborhood public meeting and it was, uh, greatly construed at the meeting amongst the neighbors what actually took place with, uh, the Spirit House and the proposed house for sale and the activity of the Butte Silver Bow Government and Commission. Um, it was stated in the meeting at the, in the neighborhood that the council had knew of this request. It had been before us and we had turned our eye to it or turned our head to it and allowed it to proceed without public notification, which is obviously completely incorrect. Um, we rectified that at the meeting. Uh, we stated that it did not come in front of the council. Uh, we did not turn our head to it and that we were not made aware of it as well. Um, the public wants notification. You know, I mean, we made it clear at the meeting in the neighborhood as well as throughout the process that, yes, that cannot be denied, but the, the public that has paid attention to this, uh, communication process simply has to be made aware of things that might happen within their own neighborhood. Um, you know, families, young families, they even had the, uh, the principal of West Elementary attended the neighborhood meeting and was talking about school safety. Um, I'm not into getting into the, into the weeds where we should be discriminating against facilities, uh, you know, and unfortunately or fortunately here, it's six months from now, I won't be around with all of you to answer the questions. But what happens when a, uh, transitional sober living facility wants to locate into a neighborhood next to somebody who's a foster parent? You know, I mean, we've talked about both sides of the issues, but nobody's talked about the fact that what happens if two of them are on the same block? Does the foster parent have the same opportunity to, to be made aware of a transitional sober living facility that may impact the safety or well-being or the decisions that they make on behalf of their foster children or their own children? Or is it something that we should just allow them to proceed and then that they make up their own mind if they're going to remain in the neighborhood themselves or not? I'm certainly not advocating making it harder for a foster family. Um, you know, I've lived in Butte my whole life, as, as most all of you have. And I know that if somebody was made aware of the fact that somebody was applying to be a foster parent or have a foster home within a block, it's the kind of community that would rally behind them and either probably offer services to help support the children, whether it be financial, uh, provide clothing, provide meals, provide services, uh, you know? I, I see that, uh, you know, there's a, a huge issue here with them being lumped under the same umbrella. But, um, you know, I think that the spirit of this and, and the reason that I'm behind it is that the public wants to be made aware of the fact that these things could happen in their neighborhood, uh, you know? And as we all know, uh, it's public servants. Most people don't know what's on the agenda at any given week anyway. I mean, I've sat on the council for eight years and unless it's really like something, a burning issue to somebody, they don't even pay attention to what's on the agenda. I think it's our job as a public servant to make people aware of the opportunity that if they want to know what's going to happen in the community, that we're, that we show that transparency, we provide it. Uh, you know, I'm not saying that we should get on the phone and tell everybody in town every time the zoning board's going to meet every month and let them know what's on it. That certainly is an issue that each individual has to make themselves aware of. But as we all know, uh, if a foster parent applies for a permit, ninety-nine point nine percent of the people in town aren't going to pay attention or even raise an issue about it. I mean, that's my opinion. We've seen it time and time again. We see it at council. We have empty chambers for weeks on end until there's a hot button issue and then we have a full house, but nobody pays attention to what's on the agenda. Um, I'm certainly about transparency, you know, giving information to the public. And I think that, you know, I'm obviously going to support and if someone has another, I'll make a motion, deny the recommendation from the planning department. And I would ask that we plan or we schedule a public hearing in front of the council and place this, is it correct to place this communication on file or hold it for cross-reference?
Oh, second the motion pending that answer.
I would imagine if you're going to deny the communication and schedule a public hearing, then it would be wise to hold it in the committee of the whole, just as a reference point.
Mr. Chief Executive?
Commissioner McDonough?
So I'll make that in the form of a formal motion that we deny the requ, or deny the recommendation from the planning department and we schedule a public hearing and hold this communication in the committee of the whole.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to deny the request and communication twenty-twenty dash two-five-eight, schedule a public hearing, uh, holding this communication in the committee of the whole. Um, I guess on the question, I would ask, what, what's the public hearing for? What's the, what's the purpose of the public hearing? Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Uh, during our discussions, it was, um, discussed from County Attorney Joyce and, um, Ms. Casey and the planning department that two public hearings are required if we made it through the first step, through the planning department. We would, in order to make the change to the ordinance, be required to have a public hearing in front of the council as well.
Okay, I understand that.
If that's not the case, then, then I'll amend my motion again.
No, I, I just wanted to know what the purpose was. You clarified it perfectly. Thank you. So, question, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Just to, you know, in light of, of our chief legal counsel for Butte Silver Bow, giving us an opinion on, on her stance on the law, our planning director, our zoning board, properly vetting this, having a lengthy discussion on it as well, looking at, at the facts as they pertain to Butte Silver Bow, um, in, in our area, and, and really just, uh, you know, putting some faith into our, our staff here at Butte Silver Bow and, and all the boards associated with it. I'm going to make a substitute motion that we, um, accept the recommendation of the planning board that's serving as the zoning board and, and place this communication on file.
Second.
Okay, we have a substitute motion made and seconded to accept the recommendation in communication twenty-twenty dash two-five-eight and place the communication on file. Is there anything on the question? Commissioner Sorge?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I guess this is either a question for County Attorney, uh, Joyce or, uh, Lori Casey. Um, being a resident, being a residential area, does the applicant for the special use permit have to reside in the location?
County Attorney Joyce or Lori?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Sorge, no, the applicant does not, um, have to reside there.
Thank you.
So, follow up. So that, that special, if they get a special use such as a foster care, so then if a foster care family is licensed, that special use permit could follow them into the next, into their next property? Or would they have to get another one if they moved into a larger house?
Um, Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Sorge, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. The, uh, conditional use permit runs with the land and, and not, uh, the applicant. It would, it would stay with the property?
Thank you.
Commissioner Olson, did you have your?
No. Um, so the, um, motion was presented, what's that going to leave the status of this? Does this mean we, uh, deny the whole, um, ordinance or we just, uh, effectively note and place on file?
Commissioner Morgan, you made the motion. Would you want to explain what your intent was?
This, my, the motion that I made would just end the process wholeheartedly. It wouldn't, uh, wouldn't go any farther. The, um, zoning rules would stay in effect and we wouldn't be amending them. It would, it would essentially die tonight if my motion passes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Just, just as, I, I'm just going to state this before we all vote, that, um, this is a positive thing that we're trying to do. It's not the fact that we're going against, um, planning or zoning. The recommendations are, they, they're, they're made very- um, planning or zoning. The recommendations are, they, they, they're, they're made very well and the, the staff does a great job. They're, I, I, I just wanna note that, that, um, the people of Butte Montana are speaking, not just the west side. With that being said, that's, that's where this is going. In my opinion, that's, um, um, the people are talking. They want change in Butte Montana, so just, that's, that's, I have nothing else to say other than that. Thank you.
Commissioner Shea?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Um, so, so my observations of this is we do have a great deal of faith in our staff, for sure. Um, I, there's never a doubt with any of that. Um, but I do agree with Commissioner O'Neal and many others that the goal is to do something good here. Nobody wants to adversely affect foster and kinship homes. The goal is to bring transparency to the process and the neighbors deserve that, and there's been a large outcry for that. Um, the state did a great disservice to local localities by combining these homes under a singular classification. And the state needs to be pressured to change the definition or peel apart those two, those two types of homes. Um, I have spoken to a couple of people that are, um, members of the legislative body at the state, and the only way they're gonna make a change is if more local governments step up demonstrate that they want control over their own loc- local, local, um, zoning. Um, I know that not all of our questions are gonna be answered at this meeting, for sure, um, because every question seems to elicit another question. Um, so I do think it merits time for additional research and conversation um, in order to justify that the body, that, that all of their questions have been answered and that they have done everything they possibly can and have investigated every avenue possible before we tell, before we tell people, no, you don't have a right to know what's going into your neighborhood. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any further que- question? I don't see anything, so did everyone understand the motion? The substitute motion is what you're voting on and is to accept the recommendation in communication twenty twenty dash two five eight and place the communication on file. Will everyone please vote?
We're working on getting the vote up. Okay, I, it does, it's up on my screen.
Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Looks like three yea and what, eight nays.
We're missing one vote.
Mr. Anderson?
I voted nay.
So three to nine.
Okay, motion dies. We'll go to the original motion, which was to deny the request in communication twenty twenty dash two five eight and schedule a public hearing and hold this in the committee of the whole. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote?
This is not a begin.
He's working on writing.
Yeah, he's.
Could you repeat that, Mr. Palmer? Sure. Was to deny the request in communication twenty twenty dash two five eight, schedule a public hearing and hold the communication in the committee of the whole. Believe that was the motion.
I, Commissioner McDonough, I think that fits it, doesn't it?
Okay. Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk record the vote? Ten yes and two no. Motion carries. Okay, we will move on to communication twenty twenty dash two five nine. This is the one we suspended the rules. Get the communication on tonight's agenda. Uh, who have that communication right in front of me, will the clerk please read the title for the communication?
Mr. Chief Executive, communication twenty twenty dash two five nine is a letter from Ms. Eileen Joyce. Um, I'm requesting authorization to allow the chief executive to sign the attached contract between the Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services, Addictive and Mental, um, Mental Disorders Division, DPHHS, and the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, uh, Montana, city and county. The purpose of this contract is to allow for the utilization of grant funding provided to the city, county by the DPHHS to address acute mental health needs within the city and county of Butte Silver Bow.
Second, thank you.
Nope, I, that wasn't a motion.
Commissioner Morgan?
At this time, Mr. Chief Executive, I would make a motion that we approve communication twenty twenty dash two five nine.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion made and seconded concurrent to request in communication twenty twenty dash two five nine and place the communication on file. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote? Looks like twelve yea and zero nay. Motion carries. Okay, next, we're gonna go to section three, ordinances and resolutions, and there's a little bit of confusion on this page, so I'm gonna explain how everything should be going here. Um, council, we'll do council bill twenty twenty dash zero five. That's just being introduced tonight, so it'll be, typically would be referred to judiciary, so. Number two would be resolution number twenty twenty dash three one. We're gonna hold that for the public hearing on July eighth. And the next one is council bill twenty twenty dash zero three for final reading. Will the clerk please read the title?
Mr. Chief Executive, council bill number twenty twenty dash zero three, ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero three is an ordinance establishing a new chapter of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, to be numbered twelve point one seven and to be entitled parklet, pedlet permits and providing for an effective date herein. At this time, I move to place council bill number twenty twenty dash zero three, ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero three on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass council bill twenty twenty dash zero four, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four on final reading. I mean, this is oh three, I guess we're on. It's, uh, council bill oh three and ordinance oh three. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote? It's twelve yea and zero nay. Motion carries. Next, we'll go to council bill twenty twenty dash zero four, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four. Commissioner Morgan?
Mr. Chief Executive, council bill number twenty twenty dash zero four, ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero four is an ordinance amending chapter eight point oh two of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, entitled vacant buildings and specifically amending code BSB, oh, amending sections eight point zero two point zero two zero, eight point zero two point zero three zero, enacting a new section eight point zero two point zero four zero and amending uh, by sections, amending by renumbering the prior section eight point zero two point zero four zero to eight point zero two point zero five zero, renumbering eight point zero two point zero five zero to eight point zero two point oh six zero, renumbering and amending eight point zero two point oh six zero to eight point zero two point oh seven zero, renumbering eight point zero two point zero seven zero to eight point zero two point zero eight zero, renumbering and amending eight point zero two point zero eight zero to eight point zero two point zero nine zero and approving for an effective date here, or an effective date herein.
Second.
At this time, I'll make a motion that we approve council bill or we place council bill twenty twenty dash zero four, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Okay, now it's a second. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to place council bill twenty twenty dash zero four, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote? Twelve yea and zero nay. Motion carries. Next, we have, uh, three resolutions for the suspension of the rules for final passage, twenty twenty dash twenty six, twenty twenty dash thirty two and twenty twenty dash thirty three. Commissioner Morgan, hold.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move for the suspension of the rules for the purpose of passing council uh, resolution twenty twenty dash two six, twenty twenty dash three three and twenty twenty dash three two by waiving subsection seven of rule thirty six of the rules and order of the council of commissioners, thereby having it considered for advanced passage without reference to the judiciary committee. I think I got all of them.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion made and seconded to suspend the rules to pass council resolutions twenty dash twenty six, twenty twenty dash thirty two and twenty twenty dash thirty three on final reading without reference to judiciary. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
One person just needs to hit submit.
Okay, twelve yea and zero nay. Motion carries. First, we'll go to council resolution twenty twenty dash twenty six. Commissioner Morgan?
Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty six is a resolution authorizing the lease purchase agreement in connection with improvements to the public safety communication systems. Um, Mr. Chief Executive, I believe Ms. Gleason is on the line if there's any questions, but um, attachment or exhibit A was attached to this resolution as she just got the information, so I don't know if Ms. Gleason has anything to add, but.
Gleason?
Yep, uh, Chief Executive Palmer, commissioners, um, this is just a normal process to add, um, similar to when we issue bonds. We add the pricing, once the pricing is set, this is just adding in exhibit eight, uh, exhibit A, I'm sorry, the final, um, agreement in that leasing. Um, if you recall, a couple of months ago, we had released an RFQ for financing of the radio project and US Bank was, um, the one awarded uh, based on a one point nine two percent interest rate, um, to finance the radio project. And those are just the legal documents that are being added in, um, and then we'll seek authorization for the chief executive and myself to sign those documents.
Commissioner Morgan?
Mr. Chief Executive, I move to place council resolution twenty twenty dash two six on final reading and as amended and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass council resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty six on final reading. Is there anything on the question?
As amended, Mr. Chief Executive.
As amended. Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk record the vote? It's twelve yea and zero nay. Motion carry. Next, we'll go to resolution twenty twenty dash three two. Commissioner Morgan?
Three two? Do you wanna do three three first? All three two?
Doesn't matter.
Resolution, uh, what's that?
Out of order.
Uh, resolution twenty twenty dash three two is a resolution certifying the results of the canvass of votes cast in the primary election held in the city and county of Butte Silver Bow on June second, twenty twenty, declaring nominated those individuals having the highest number of votes cast for county offices, certifying the results of votes cast for individuals to the board of the county canvassers and providing for an effective date herein. At this time, I'll move to place council resolution twenty twenty dash three two on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass council resolution number twenty twenty dash three two on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote? It's twelve yea and zero nay. Motion carries. Next, we'll go to twenty twenty dash three three. Commissioner Morgan?
Resolution twenty twenty dash three three is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for Waysaw Supply Company with the Department of Commerce of the state of Montana for Big Sky Economic Development Trust Fund Program under the terms of the Community Development Act of nineteen seventy four, uh, forty-two USC fifty-three oh one as amended. At this time, I put, I moved to place resolution twenty twenty dash three three on final reading and pass, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to pass council resolution twenty twenty dash three three on final reading. Is there anything on the question? Will everyone please vote? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Will the clerk please record the vote?
Just missing one person right now, Mr. Chief Executive.
It looks like twelve yea and zero nay. Motion carries. Next, we'll go to public comment on any public member not on the agenda. Any on the phone, John?
We'll go to the phone lines. Right now, there's nobody, but if we can just give it a few seconds. Mr. Chief Executive, there's nobody on the line and I don't have any more to read tonight.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to adjourn. Is there anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, Chief Executive Palmer, I just, I just wanna thank everybody on council, out there in our community, all the folks that called in and writ- wrote in. I, it just really makes a difference and, and I can't say how much I appreciate the, the input that we do get. And, uh, I, you know, like I say, I wanna thank everyone that was involved in, uh, particularly in the case that we talked about with the zoning ordinance, so thank you.
Hey, thank you. Well, thanks, everyone. Have a good day.
Good night.
Nighty night, everyone.
Good night.